Whether you'd be able to do it, so you're doing what you're using. That's a major step. Sounds like in the book, this set, I'm definitely trying to work on changing the training and the content. Flashlights, right? If you're there, what it's going for. So our first item was to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? What's an app, hearing that there is a motion, is there a second? Does there any discussion? There are no discussion on favor of approving the agenda, then by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, second. The eyes have a visual of the consent agenda that's next. I need a motion for that. Please, when the motion is approved, is there a second? There's a motion, second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. So then we will go to uh city council, then to again, the city council, number ten, sorry, in the packet. To pick up the spirit, the concerns we got, so also, there's an agenda for this, for your minutes for the special uh council meeting that they had. And also, the other spread, crazy reporters there, don't really assume that they were, we've got any of those issues that we've had fresh with the back. Okay, we arranged for a uh recognition of Diana. Father, on one day, uh for a King, the United States citizen, but I don't see her here tonight. A reminder that, that I was in college, uh one of the professors who said, and the professor on the day, that date got changed. So he said he would go down the pot and take a drink of water, and then anyone that's on the way even skip a pass that day. So, uh, we just got this, and I know we have so it's okay, uh, and if she likes, we've been uh greater for us. Next up are the reports, um, uh, the city manager told me that she does, a city engineer, the authority.
So I also, like, well, you're definitely, uh, pretty good, maybe, uh, to attend to all of them, so they gotta, so there's the process. Um, we, this is, we, not very soon to follow, probably, we've had, we've come back, Adam and I both, which I, uh, we're starting now, it's months ago. And I was started on the way, uh, so it's such, uh, uh, with that, but we don't need to be so, 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 it's like, uh, we're not getting, uh, uh, so we started, started with, uh, the, uh, my, you know, it.
Stop signs were a godsend, in my opinion.
Yeah, because I, there are many times pulling out on just Spencer. For myself, there is very little line of sight, especially if you have a big vehicle or a pickup truck. Um, you have to pull out to about thirty percent of the intersection before you can. Or more, before you can see oncoming traffic for, for. The opposite perpendicular traffic um coming. And I know this has been discussed for many years. Especially since we started renovating the downtown. Uh, there's been more um improvements made, more social engagements happening. That there's more foot traffic, like you said, and people are concerned, so.
Yeah, and just the, you know, and. Um, Public Works is continuing to still look at, I mean, they're, you know, some folks that communicated, you know, why didn't we remove, you know, parking spaces? Well, just as you're saying, it's a positive thing to have a busy downtown. And, you know, it's already limited to finding parking spaces in our downtown. So when we remove those, then, you know, you're removing. You know, an opportunity up to four parking spaces, so then you need to say, where are we gonna send those, you know, spaces? So we're not taking away from the activity in places that park. So I know um. Public Works Director Reinhardt continues, you know, to take a look at, you know, should we eliminate a parking space um? We have a follow-up conversation that had, we were fully, if you remember, we were looking for diagonal parking along Spencer. So if there's an opportunity so we can create that diagonal parking. That allow, may allow more parking spaces to support the downtown. Um, and then we would find ourselves possibly in a better position to eliminate a parking space to make it. More visual, but still continue to have the four-way stop, so. I, you know, for the community to know, it's, you know, again, we'll continue to look and see what we can do to improve the safety and. And still be able to provide those spaces for folks to park and utilize to be in our downtown.
And I was just gonna add that. It's only, we're only gonna get bigger. So, all, when, when those houses start coming up and more people move to town, downtown will even be more, even. Bizarre, and so when these new folks come to town, they'll be. You know, acclimated to, and if they don't know the difference, if there wasn't one there. Um, so I think it'll be a good thing in the long run.
My students also complained that we don't have a lot of people thank us and said that, you know, they struggle to get through that intersection as well.
That's all right.
Thanks. Are there other comments, correspondence? I did mention that I received a letter that I had laid aside. Uh, where someone has some cemetery lots that wants to match it on, so I'll drop those off to the city clerk.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I did have a comment in regards to the stop sign. But um. They're concerned about why the stop sign that was put in the middle of the road is now gone. Because they, I guess, the one that was planted in the middle is gone now. And uh, they've seen people just barreled through the intersection. And so they feel it should remain there for a little while.
We were, uh, with the pending storms coming in, there's also potential eighty mile an hour winds. Um, the, uh, Adam. To remove it for now, so that we, you know, advise any. Injury or anything with the stop sign blowing away, so, but I can follow up with them tomorrow.
Okay, I was gonna say, or ask, if it was going to be put back, uh, when the weather settles down.
I also, I had one more thing, um, but you guys can go first if you want, sorry to talk.
I just had a couple of things, uh, I had a couple individuals reach out with some concern noticing some different. Sports utility vehicles starting to kind of come out on the road. They were concerned noticing that they were. People were racing up and down alleys, they run through stop signs, they kind of go faster than they probably should, they notice. Young children on them. And where that made them nervous, uh, I did speak with City Manager Gertz about this and the best course of action if somebody. Notices this and. In discussion, we just kind of said, there is the. Non-emergency line that they can call and tip that off, or they could file complaints anonymously. Pictures or video, of course, would help. I would open it to chief workers if they have anything to add to that, I would like that to be handled. When we notice this.
I mean, I just anyway, people feel something, but I mean, those things that would write that file. Cars and roads, but that's what you're pretty easy to track down. The issues, if we don't witness it, there, of course, it's gonna be an issue, but we still definitely talk to them, like, hey. You see this happens, or that it's like, be more cautious on the road.
At this point in time, and again, I mean, having public, you know, providing us. Where we can't always have eyes on those things and just, you know, letting the public know that, you know, please do share because. You know, I look at it as, again, I mean, it's, it's all of us, you know, creating that public safety. And it's not that we're trying, you know, like. Even if it's your neighbor or something, it's not like you're trying to, you know. Tell on them, it's, you know, again, it's mostly because we have to have safety. And, you know, when having those even collide with a. A vehicle, I mean, and if you've heard the news in Muscatine just this last weekend, there was a, a very tragic. Again, that was an animal versus, but at the same time, I'll go right back to that, you know, that proactive approach of being safe and. And having community members, you know, work together and. So we can get better, so we don't wanna lose a. A fun thing, but at the same.
I wonder if it'd be helpful also, maybe do a reminder on the, the city Facebook page, because there is a set of regulations of how things are handled. You need to update the restroom, and you can't be a certain age to drive them. So, I mean, I would think they would know some of those issue or, uh, regulations, maybe a friendly reminder.
Definitely, I don't think it refers to.
Yeah, we can work with the police department, and we, uh, I think that's good input and.
Did you mention two issues that?
Yes, I did check in with a couple of the business owners downtown after the stop sign was put up and. Just to see how they've noticed any changes, and they did mention that they have noticed a. A positive change in less speeding. People coming barreling through and almost like they have a little less worried anxiety when people are kind of pulling in and pulling out. They were pleased with the decision.
Good, council member, you had another.
Yeah, um, I almost forgot, and then my assistant. AKA Paul just texted me to remind me, thank you, um, so there's a street lamp. Real big pole in my cul-de-sac that is like sideways almost. Um, and I think it got bent from the derecho a couple of years or a year ago, whenever it was. And um. I, I mean, we. It doesn't really bother us, but I was wondering like what the procedure is. If we, and, and like looking at it, because my neighbor brought it to my attention. Um, looking at it, it looks like there's some deterioration and stuff in the pole, like what, what the procedure is for that, and then also. The street lamp light shines directly into her house and lights up her house every night, is there like a lampshade or anything? She, she seems to think that she looked it up and there's some kind of lampshade we can put on our street lights, but. So my question is, if we needed to replace it anyway, is that an option, um, if it's affecting?
So the, the electric department does have a light, a, a pole, light pole inventory. And they, you know, they keep a, you know, an inventory on the replacement of them. Um, I would have to. What I would recommend is this would be a service request. And so you can contact City Hall and give the address. Um, and then let them know that, you know, we're requesting a service request to have the electric department review the, with concerns of that. Um, of that street light, because it's a street light, right now, there's a security light.
Yeah, it's just, it's a street light, yeah, the one right on the end of. Between me and Ashley's house and the pole sack.
For the public to know, yeah, I would always call and recommend, you know, a service request to have something like that with that. I made a note of it, um, so council member Dominguez will follow up and. And then I'll have the electric superintendent reach out to you and follow up on that.
Any other comments from the city manager?
Um, just real quick, um, we did receive um, uh, about three calls with regards to just as. Um, Craig and Danny were speaking about, um, with that backup. Um, we had some properties along Third Street that, um, were impacted. And, um, I reached out to our insurance company at the city, uh, because I'm not sure. Um, if, you know, I don't wanna get into too much, but. We're trying to review where the liability is at, and I know Danny's, um, he's written up a report on one. Um, and, you know, sometimes these things can be managed by backlog, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, this would be backlog prevention. Um, by the homeowner, um, I think in some cases, um. If you haven't had your sump pump running for a while, we haven't had any major rain events. It's a good reminder for people to make sure they're testing their sump pumps, make sure they, there's power to them. Uh, because I do believe maybe that might have been one issue was the sump pump, um, was, didn't have power. Um, so we'll continue to work with those households and. Um, our insurance company to see if there is the liability that falls back on the city or if it would fall under the homeowners' insurance, so. If you had anything more to.
Looking at that is like, um. Sump pumps are not supposed to be bent into the city sewer. Uh, yeah, so if, if. If your sump pump stopped running and it backs up and you have sewage in your basement, that is. That shouldn't be happening. You should replace your sump pump line and it should not be going into the city sewer. Uh, yeah, it just, it's not supposed to be.
Which we, again, um, that brought up another educational piece that we'll work with communications on, you know, to. Is, you know, just some of that. Public relations to communicate, educate people, make sure it's not. And to check, just like what we're talking about, is make sure that you're checking your sump pump and. Um, what they can do for preventative action for something like that to happen. I mean, I, again, knock on you way, I don't, I mean, we've been. There was a time when we've had a lot of reports like this, um, and so this is the first time in. In many years that we've had an incident that occurred like that, so, again, I mean, our team is doing a good job of. Managing it, but I think a lot of it also back in two thousand thirteen and fourteen was that education piece to get people. To understand that, you know, about. The sewer and, um, the sump pump and the backflow prevention stuff, so we'll, we'll, we'll come back around to that again.
It's the same thing with Ford, like in Boston, uh, there's. There's one building in the city that is allowed a four-point to go to the city sewer, and that's the water plant. I mean. There should be no other city, uh, or no other residents, waterings connected to a city sewer. So. Again, that's for the insurance side, where, where that ends up falling, but. But improperly connected, uh, sump pump or, or three, I, I don't know how that, from that.
We agree, yeah, I mean, within our family, um, so, yeah.
On Tuesday, we actually had four point four. Making, uh, going through the waste part of life.
That a lot.
How much more?
Yeah, could, could you?
Normal day is about. Two million of that.
Oh, wow.
So, some days only one point five, one point six.
I can tell you we had pumps going for. Thirteen hours.
So, I mean, we just had that to lose rain and. The turkey panel sent down over a thousand gallons a minute. So we put that on top of everything else and. There's no place for it to go eventually.
Is there a ratio that you look for between water consumption and sewer usage? I mean, like, is it one to one, um?
And when it comes to, and when it comes to the sewer flows, it's, it's essentially, um. For many years, we haven't had a good, and we still don't have a good. Not true lining program. But that's something that we need to really start hammering down on. And putting money into because. I mean, even just the backup that we had on Third Street, it was clear water, it wasn't dirty water, it was. As soon as we got, uh, the stuff flowing, it was still flowing like. People have their showers running on stuff, there's no such in it. And there's, it was clear water, so we have a serious infiltration problem. In our, in our, uh, in our sewer system and. Falls on me to, uh, create a good, uh, fund for a lining program, yeah.
And we do, and we did try to, for that, to get that project, I'm sure what you talked about.
And that will identify where the source is, so.
We haven't, um, it's gonna take a lot of. Taking the camera out, Jenny, uh, cammering, I know back in twenty. Eighteen or nineteen, we hired Ken Way. To do, uh, some smoke testing and cameraing, but nothing ever came of it. We, uh, got the data and it's, uh, it does. Um, but it's, yeah, I mean, now it's up to me to.
Since we all, oh, sorry. Yeah, since we've all taken over your report, anything else?
Um, hotel feasibility study, we've extended that, um, we didn't have, there were a couple, um, pieces. Uh, some larger businesses that hadn't completed the survey yet, um, one of them came through today. Um, so we're in hopes that we can wrap that up within the next, you know, few weeks, um, so I just wanted to report on where we were at with that. Um, and, let me see. Um, staff today, we, um, again, unfortunately, with severe weather. Um, time got away with, uh, from us over the winter months, and as the severe weather approached, um. Again, we started speaking among staff and taking that proactive approach. And I just wanna take, uh, time to thank Superintendent, uh. Um, Sean, or Sean at the school and, um, and Saint Joseph's, Father G. Um, they were really good about working with Chief, um, communicating that we could utilize their buildings for. The school wrestling room, um, for after-school hours in case shelter is needed. Um, and Father G, of course, of Saint Joe's, you know, provided that he would be available if people needed shelter and give them his friends. Fortunately, I mean, things went really well, um, but Chief, um, is, uh, taking the lead and gonna give, um. Ministerial Association for the churches and the school and, um, us together so we can put together a more formal procedure. Um, and speaking with, uh, Brittany from Communications today, you know, put that in so then we can get. You know, that posted, so we have something more formal, um, that we can provide to our public because. We do have a lot of homes that do not have basements and, um, more suitable shelter within their homes and so. You know, we wanna just make sure that we're doing everything again, it comes back for our safety of the community to make sure that they've got an option if they haven't already found one. Um, we took a call last week on Friday, um, uh. Councilor Dominguez and I, uh, working with, uh, the. Um, addition now bringing on the, uh, National Guard to our program, which that's in your package tonight. So I won't go into that too much more, um. And I also just quickly, and I'm sorry, I wanted to say thank you to Brittany. Uh, very much from Communications, because at our budget meeting the other night. Um, when I was talking about team and how much I appreciate our team, um, I did not remember to recognize. Brittany, because she put together the, uh, wonderful, you know, slides that we had for me to. You know, do my job in presenting it, but I can't do it without the visuals, so. I just wanted to say thank you, Brittany, for that, and, um, that is all I have to say.
City clerk.
So I don't have public correspondence, but I do have correspondence for city council, um. I just wanna remind everybody, I would be out, Deputy City Clerk Reinhardt and myself will be out at the I am at the Way Conference. Starting tomorrow and through Friday, so you will be out at training, but if you need anything, I'll have my email in myself. Um, I wanted to give you an update on the city code, I am starting to now get. Items coming in that I can take a look at, right now, we're working on the police department and, and the control, kind of going through there, seeing what we want exactly. Um, he was behind, and he wanted me to apologize to you guys, he had some final things that came through that needed to be re. Looked at, um, but now he is dividing his attention to us, so hopefully. We'll start seeing some things come through here in the near future, and we can start getting that put into place and from there, we'll update it. Um, the last thing is, is I just wanted to give you an update on my staff, um, it's been a long time since we kind of. Talked about the training and everything that's happening on Wednesdays. We have moved into the phase where we are cross-training people in positions to be able to back us, which was the plan from the beginning. Um, staff is doing extremely well, they've gotten more comfortable in their current position, and now they're kind of expanding their knowledge a little bit. So it's nice to be able to see that happening within City Hall, so I wanted to give you an update. So that you guys know how busy they're going for us. We have meetings, uh, once every three weeks now. More of a Wednesday afternoon, we're more focused on training and getting people specialized where they need.
Thanks. All right, next up, uh, is discussion and appropriate action on the City Council of West Liberty. On the event request for Latinos Unidos, uh, for September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, here in West Liberty, so, uh, we start out with, uh, discussion and then motion. And consent vote on that, so, uh, is there a discussion?
Mayor and, uh, Council, Mr. Martinez is here with us and, um, have you have any questions? Um, I've reviewed the application and, um. Again, very similar to what we've been doing for many years, so. Yeah, yeah, so, very well organized event, um, very well attended by community and. Um, visitors in our community, so, um, they've done a nice job of. You know, setting up and cleaning up, um, and handling the entire event, so. Um, it would be my recommendation to, um, support the event. Um, I did talk to Mr. Martinez, um, about the portable bathrooms, I'll just continue to have a conversation. We do have portable restrooms, um, that the city has on hand. Um, but any addition based on how many attendants and the group themselves are responsible for that, so. We'll, we'll continue to have our conversations.
I will add that I attended the first would have been the sixteenth, uh, one, and it was a fantastic event. All right, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the request?
Motion to approve the request?
Is there a second? There is a.
I'm sorry to interrupt. There's two, uh, event requests, it just includes both, correct?
Yes, yes, that original one is just a street opening, the three thirty one is just a street opening portion, the other parts, the.
And then one's the actual event.
Yeah, for the street, that's, that portion is just for the street, closing three and a half hours.
We started the parade last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, because under the agenda, it's just the one. Line item, okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay sign, the ayes have it, congratulations, uh, and we're all looking forward to September fourteenth.
Yeah, we'll stay in contact and we'll work with the police department and their, and their staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, next up is Resolution twenty twenty-four, um. Oh, four sixteen, Ivan one four five, one four five. Um, and this is a lot of paper that, uh, was included in about the trip. To the Pentagon that will occur on May, uh, thirteenth with, uh. Uh, City Manager Gertz, um, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Vic Farren and Council Member Dominguez. Um, so, um, we need to be able to approve the resolution, is there a motion, uh, to approve? Motion to approve, is there a second? It's been moved in second, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I would just like to, um, this is, um. Of course, a draft, um, resolution, but it moves us forward. With the finalization with, um, the agreement. Uh, the agreement is, um, for the most part, it's identical to what we've already done with the Army Reserve. Um, in addition, they, uh, because now this moves to state. Uh, because the reserves is nation, the state is, um. Managed and funded under the state level, so they requested some additional steps, um, from there. From the state side of it, and versus how the federal, they provided one month sum of the funding. Uh, the National Guard, a state side, has requested that they do a monthly. Um, in order to track and, um, and, and follow within their compliance at the state level. Um, I didn't know council members Dominguez had anything going to add.
I think that was the main difference, um, also Jessa, who's been with us from the very beginning from upwards. Um, we also asked maybe, um, to contact the local. Um, coordinators that they hired, so that we could meet them one day, and, and they're like in the Quad City area, I think there's. One or two, um, I know they were hiring two, but I know they at least hired one. But I think it would be really cool to, like, just put a base to the name and let the council. Um, thank them for the work that they're doing locally to, to support it.
And Councilmember Dominguez was very clear in asking, because with this being the National Guard. Um, we would anticipate that, and because it's a monthly. We do anticipate that, you know, the city may have more, a little more administrative, a little more tracking, right now. Uh, we care and, and their folks handle, um. A hundred percent of the processing, with this being more at a local level within the state. Um, there may be a little more administrative, um, but nothing within, you know, what we should be able to handle, I think the bigger thing is, is just. Making sure that we're, um, a part of. The team to get the information out to the public, um, and they were very appreciative, um, because. We are the only city in the state of Iowa that will be, um, offering the program right now. There will be some other states that will eventually bring on their guard, but we will be the, the first. And then also, um. Uh, there was one more thing I was gonna say, but. Well, we, we covered a lot of territory in a very short period of time, and you're on the phone with people across the United States. And, um, you know, and trying to organize, um, you know, state-level military, federal-level military. All of your, we care, your organizers, and then, you know. You have Councilmember Dominguez and I, um, and they're very respectful, very good with us, uh, and very much appreciative of what.
Yeah, I think the one thing that Dave, our person, our contact point. For the, uh, the new Ivan, yeah, I think he really wanted to. Make it clear to Lee and I, it seemed like how important this is and how. Does, it might not seem like it, but that it's such a huge impact, and he, um. Said that he was in conversation with someone else about this program, and. When the bridge went down in Baltimore. There was a shortage of guard to go and spawn because they could not find childcare out. And so it was interesting that he was saying, this, this program that you all gave us this chance to try to. Try to implement, um, is in, like, people's thoughts and stuff, like, I wish we had that program. Um, because it would have, it would have really helped in those situations and, and how changed, how life-changing it is. He said that the retention rate has alre, has already increased for reserve members to re-enlist. Because now they feel supported that they can find childcare to go to drill, um. And I think he said that, well, me personally, I, because I talk about it, you know, I don't know, this. Size or something, um, I get lots of ads for upwards specifically for this program, um. And so I'm able to on social media kind of see the comments from people all over, and there are so many people like, I want this here, I wish this was here. Can you expand it to, you know, uh, active military from all branches, and I know that they're really looking. For those opportunities to expand, and it looks like what we're doing already is working, and we're gonna expand the National Guard and hopefully to other branches as well.
Is there any further discussion? Very none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
With Fern. With Baron?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Freezer?
Yep.
Motion passive five zero.
Okay, next up is a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? It's been moved in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.